Hi, everyone. Welcome to Studio Stillwater. My name's Michelle Charles.
My name's Chris Peters.
And we are glad you are joining us for the very, very, very early stages of our new project. We're very excited about this.
Yes. Our idea is to kind of start some community conversations that we can all benefit from.
Absolutely.
And specifically, starting with some local elections.
Exactly. We have a municipal and a school board election coming up on February 9th. And we want to give people an opportunity to learn a little bit more about the candidates. I mean, there are forums, certainly. But the format is usually you get 90 seconds to tell us who you are. And then you have 60 to 90 seconds to answer a series of semi-pointed questions about specific policies. But none of those really give you a sense of who the candidate is as a person and where they're coming from, what's important to them. And I think that's what I want to know. I mean, I want to know, what are somebody's values? What drives them? And how does that translate into this desire to be in public service or elected office?
Listen in to get to know them and then give us your, your feedback on, uh, on, on what you think. So you'll probably find this on social media and, uh, and whatnot. Let's see what we can do.
Yeah, absolutely. And we are open to suggestions. We want to know what you want to know about. What are your, what are your burning questions? What, what issues are you concerned about? Is there someone you know who is really fascinating and really cool and not enough people know about them? We want to know about that stuff. These are stories that we want to tell as well. So we've got, we've got great ideas. We think you guys probably have some greater ideas that, and we would love to hear them. And, um, you know, we've got some flexibility, so we're, we're creating this as we go. And you can have, you can play a part in that. And we want you to play a part in that. We want the community to be a part of this. So that we can give you what you're looking for.
We're just having a conversation.
Yeah.
Just with candidate Ariel Ross.
Exactly. But also human being Ariel Ross.
Well, thank you.
Which is kind of the goal of this, is to let people know who the candidates are as human beings. And why they want to do this crazy thing, to be honest.
That's a good goal.
Michelle's super prepared, writing her questions right before the interview.
But I've been thinking about them for 36 straight hours.
I mean.
I'm just finalizing them.
As a teacher who goes into class with no lecture notes, nevertheless knowing like, I prepared for this class.
Right?
I think, Michelle, you gotta open up with the, the best question in the world.
All right, all right. No pressure, no pressure at all. Thanks, Chris. Okay, Ariel, we're, you know, I mean, we just kind of want to get to know the candidates as people. And as I said, figure out why, you know, why you want to do this crazy thing, getting involved in public life, which has not been easy over the last ever, really, but extra hard the last year or so. But let's start with something relatively simple.
Sure.
How did you get to Stillwater?
It was pretty last minute, honestly. My husband Seth and I had both finished grad school within the same year. And it was like while we were in grad school, basically, the market crashed. Like, and the academic job market also crashed because suddenly people were like, well, I'm not retiring. Uh, I'm going to stay in academia forever. And so we were going into just a terrible academic job market. And we'd been interviewing and applying to jobs and nothing was happening. And finally, we were like, well, we'll go move in with Seth's parents in South Carolina. And so we'd basically moved ourselves to Beaufort, South Carolina from Atlanta. Um, and we were still interviewing for jobs over the summer. And we had a friend, um, who had moved here to Oklahoma State and he was teaching film. And he was like, hey, they're hiring a couple of positions in my department. You should apply. And Seth applied. I never did. I was interviewing for something at Clemson. And I mean, literally a month at most before the beginning of the semester, he got the job. So we're like, okay, we're moving to Oklahoma. And we packed all of our belongings and our three-year-old kid into our car and a moving van. And we drove across the country. I mean, we got here, we'd never visited. We knew nothing about Stillwater.
Oh, my goodness.
And it was just like, you live here now.
You just appeared out of nowhere, honestly.
And it, it did not feel great coming into Stillwater. We were sort of looking at like the dregs of the rental market.
What time of year did you move?
August.
Okay, so everything was already snapped up.
It was incredibly, yeah, bear pickings. There was like a heat wave, a pipe had burst in the street in front of our house, so the water was turned off. So we got in there and there were people cleaning it, but they were cleaning with straight bleach because there was no water. And so you just walk in and there were like these fumes. I mean, it was, we felt scared and alone, honestly.
That's not exactly a welcome wagon.
It was not, no.
Oh, my gosh. Now, what year was this? Was this around 2008, 2009?
No, no, no. This was, uh, eight years ago, so 2012.
2012, okay. Wow. So somehow you decided to stay, though. So what changed?
What got better?
Yes, exactly.
Well, I mean, I'm sure you both know this story. It got worse before it got better. Like, we were pretty lonely here. Seth was not super happy in his job. We did have one, one friend. The friend who told us to come, Seth called him up and was like, hey, I got the job at OSU. And he's like, hey, that's great. I'm moving to Scotland. So he was not here, but we had one friend from grad school who'd also gotten a job here. So we're like, we'll be in together. Um, but they were working. I wasn't working. I was taking care of our kid and trying to like write things and I was super lonely. And then like at the beginning of the second semester, Seth was riding his bike to campus for office hours and he got hit by a car. And that was just terrible, obviously. And he was in the ICU in Oklahoma City for two weeks. He was in rehab for two weeks. He had like, I don't even know how many surgeries. He was still having surgeries for a year afterwards. But suddenly, like, just the fact that it was because he was on a bike meant that the cycling community here, which was still kind of nascent, almost, heard about it. And they were like, what? A cyclist was hit? We have to help them. And so I, I don't even really remember how I heard, but suddenly people were like, hey, there's these people at the bike shop and they're raising money for you. And, um, and so they did, like, the, it was land run then, the second land run, they had a fundraiser and raffle. And they just gave us a check for money. And I was like, and basically they were just like, we're your friends now.
Whether you like it or not.
Yeah. And they were. Like, I remember sitting outside, uh, the Rocky Mountain Chocolate Factory with Seth and Mark, like having an ice cream. And this just, you know, kind-looking gentleman walked up to us and he was like, are you Seth Wood? Seth's like, yeah. And he's like, oh, I'm Keith Reed and we want to help you guys, whatever you need. Like, what, what can we do to help? Like, can we help you move? Do you need? And just, you know, people would keep walking up to us and just be like, hey, let us help you.
That had to be a pretty incredible feeling.
It was amazing.
Did it make up for the, the bleach smell coming into town?
We did move out of that house. And, and we moved a lot. We moved out of that house into a house on 7th. And we moved out of, we lived there a couple of years, I guess. Then we moved into one of Cory's apartments on Main Street. Lived there for a couple of years. And we lived in house by the library. And then we just bought a house, so.
Nice. Yeah, I remember it. Uh, I, I read something that you'd, you'd put out. And you said, you know, you've lived in quite a few different places in Stillwater. So chances are you could have been a lot of people's neighbor.
Yeah. Weirdly, the first house that we lived in with the terrible bleach is one of the houses that was demolished to make the new Westwood. So it doesn't exist anymore, but now like Mark got to go to that building for his last year of school. And I was like, you're literally on top of the first house I've lived in.
Nice.
That's funny. That is funny. Okay, so tell us a little bit more about your, your background. I mean, like, where, where'd you come from? Where'd you grow up?
Yeah. Um, I grew up in a small town in Colorado called Carbondale. In the mountains, beautiful place.
It sounds like it.
It's like 30 miles from Aspen, which is sort of the only reason people know about it. Uh, which makes it a weird place to be because on the one hand, it's, I mean, actually, I don't know. I wouldn't say similarly distill water, but it has a big rural agricultural community around it, which is ranching mostly. That's been there for a long time. And then this sort of growing, very rich population that has moved in and sort of spread down from Aspen. So it's, it's kind of a conflicted community, I would say. But my mom is from Colorado as well, so she lived there her whole life, pretty much. And the year I was born, my parents started preschool in Carbondale, so I went there for preschool. They're my preschool teachers.
That's cool.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, cool and weird.
Well, you never get away from mom and dad, do you?
Years afterwards, kids would come up to me and be like, your parents are my preschool teachers. And I felt like I was sort of sharing them with everybody.
My mom was my school bus driver for a little while in elementary school.
That's interesting.
Wow. My mom never worked at my school. I think I was pretty glad of that, actually. I know my brothers work because I got in trouble a lot.
Actually, by the time I went to high school, my mom worked at the high school.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
Nice. So is living in Colorado as amazing as everyone thinks it is?
I'm gonna say yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
And Seth, when I met Seth, uh, he kind of like made me realize that maybe Colorado people are sort of snobby. Which I hadn't known before. And there is a thing about like, yeah, this is the best place to be. It's a beautiful place. I mean, just.
Rocky Mountains, man. How are you gonna beat that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would choose, uh, if, if there was suddenly an option, I would be like, okay, yeah, well, I'll try that out. I'll try out the mountains.
It just seems like so many people's dream place to live.
Well, and that's become a problem, too.
Yeah.
Like, my parents sold their house in Carbondale right when I was graduating college. And moved to Philadelphia.
Ooh, big change.
Yeah, huge change. My dad got a job, um, directing a school in Philadelphia. And they just wanted to kind of have a adventure and do something different. And now, you know, like, I could never buy a house where I grew up anymore. And I have a friend who's always tracking whenever my childhood home is on the market again. She's like, yeah, it just sold for like $750,000. Okay.
Yikes.
Thanks for telling me.
Yikes. Oh, man. So, I mean, how do you think? How do you think, do you think living in Colorado formed, how do you think it formed who you are? Obviously, it added some impact on who you are and having parents who were educators.
I had a lot of sort of unconventional educational experiences, I would say. Like, my parents' school was a Montessori school. I think what I took from that was like a strong feeling that education doesn't work very well when it's really formulaic. Like, that trying to keep all children on the same level, all the, I mean, Andrea, Chris's ex-wife is, was also a Montessori educator, so.
Yeah, our kids did Montessori early on when, when that was an option here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that I've always sort of carried through as like, you, you learn things at your own pace when you're ready for them. And you learn by doing. And then I homeschooled for a while in middle school, mainly because I got to a point in public school where I just felt so out of step with it. And I, I just, I sort of myself was like, I'm not going back. And my parents were like, okay, we'll figure that out.
Okay.
And then I went to a high school, that was a private school there, that was kind of a weird, like, the most Colorado-sounding school. In the middle of the day, in the winter, we'd like take a break from classes and everybody would go skiing. And then we'd come back and have class in the evening and stuff like that.
Gosh, are you kidding me?
Yeah.
The breaks here are just to go to the fast food restaurants.
Right?
And, but that was a very much a school focused on like, you don't just learn in the classroom. You learn by doing work. You learn by physical activity, like, um, you learn from your environment. So I think that was really formational for me.
What kind of things are important to you? I mean, what's important to, to Ariel Ross as a person? I feel like this is like one of those James Lipton questions, actually.
I love James Lipton, by the way. That was a very James Lipton question. Ask me what my favorite swear word is, do.
I would love to know, actually. You can tell me off air if you want.
Or on air.
Or on air, really.
This is a family program.
Well, not necessarily. We haven't figured out the rating yet. I'm the wrong host if it's gonna be strictly G-rated. I gotta tell you that.
Just matters if you want to get that explicit tag or not.
I don't think any of us have sworn yet.
I don't think so. We're doing well.
Two here or there.
What is important to me? I mean, I'm an English teacher. And I would say the thing that has been the most consistently important to me my entire life is books. Books are really important to me. And beyond that, I think what sort of goes broadly under the name of culture. Like, music and art and libraries are really important to me. The public library here is, that, and that was one of the first places where I went in Stillwater and I felt like, oh, I'm home. And I feel like there's not a lot of space for that in politics these days. I'd like to see more conversations about like the importance of a cultural life in, in a community.
Okay. Is that why you're involved in the, uh, in some of the activities around creating a cultural district in the downtown area?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. What, what is your vision for that?
I mean, I think it's connected to place because it's not, you know, the cultural institutions here do happen to be sort of in the same area. And that's not insignificant, though, like, you can walk from one to the next. Uh, the library and the Prairie Arts Center can do things together because they're right next to each other. And, I mean.
Proximity creates opportunity for collaboration.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And once you get a certain mass, you know, then things start to happen. And it create, you know, and it attracts more, right? I mean, that's, that's one of the, you know, basics when they talk about redeveloping downtowns or really any kind of development.
Well, and it's also, I think it's really significant that a lot of the cultural institutions are free. I mean, the Stillwater, not the, the OSU museum, you can go in for free. Like, that's amazing that OSU makes that possible. The community center offers a lot of things that you can just do. The library is free, right? So that's this sort of accessibility of culture where it's not priced out of half of the community.
Because we all agree to pay for it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the, the counter argument is nothing in this world is free.
Sure, but like.
But we all like come together to say, yes, we support these things.
Some point in our history, we decided tax money should go to things like libraries as well. We value that.
Right. Well, and, and if you look at libraries, I mean, we, I, I could spend an hour talking about libraries and everything they do.
Yeah.
You know, because they provide, they, they really are a hub for the community in so many ways. I mean, everything from a place to, um, you know, warm up or cool off if you're on the street and you don't have somewhere to go, you know, in bad weather, to, um, you know, learning how to learn. Yeah, internet access, which you need to do almost anything anymore, apply for a job.
Just walking around the library the other day and I walked past the window where they had put in like huge letters facing out, this is the password for the wifi. Because when they were closed during the pandemic, they're like, we still want to make that available to people. And that just kind of warmed my heart.
And, and that's a huge thing because so many people struggle with that. I mean, when, you know, and if you rely on coffee shops or whatever, you know, to get wifi, then you're, I mean, I, I will admit to having previously, when I lived out in the country and had really spotty internet, filing a story in the parking lot of IHOP.
Oh, I was gonna call it. I was gonna call it. I was like, it's gotta be IHOP.
I will admit to that. Filing my last story of the day at like 9:45 from the IHOP parking lot.
That's awesome.
Yeah. So wifi.
Thank you, IHOP.
Right?
The, uh, the Bricktown IHOP.
Yeah.
I would, uh, go there and sometimes just, you know, just park right there, hop out the laptop. Just like I had to like check some email or something like that because internet wasn't like working at home or whatnot. And then the, uh, we used to go to IHOP in, uh, Dell City. And they were, it was in the beginning where they first started putting in free wifi. And so they just put in like a home router and stuck it on the ceiling.
Okay.
And so, uh, me and a couple of friends would go in and we'd, you know, get our coffees, open up our laptops. And, I mean, this was like 2005, 2004. And, uh, sometimes the internet wouldn't be working. And eventually it convinced the managers to let me just go up there and hit the reset button. Because that's all it needed was turned on and off. Like, your wifi is not working. And they're just like, we have wifi? Like, yeah, that, that's what that blue box on the ceiling is. And they're like, well, sure. And I was like, all I'm gonna do is turn it on and off. I promise. And that would fix it.
I have been in the Stillwater IHOP when people would come up to the, or grab their servers and say, can you reset the router? I, I kind of feel like this is, I know this is turning into.
That's not a part of my cultural history.
Isn't that weird? It's turning into like, this is turning into a tribute to IHOP. I feel like I need to go there and buy a meal and not even use their wifi. Like, I owe them now at this point.
I don't know. I feel like you're giving them credibility.
There you go.
Yeah.
There you go. So, I mean, when, when you think about what's important to you and, and the values that, that you derived from your, your upbringing and the experiences in your life, how does that all lead you to seeking a seat on the Stillwater City Council?
I mean, the, I think the catalyzing thing that made me aware of municipal government was earthquakes.
That makes sense.
Yeah. I just, I, I don't know. I was going about life, I'm teaching a job. And then suddenly we were having earthquakes. And I, you know, I got connected to people who sort of knew more about the city and things that were happening than I did. And so I ended up starting to go to city council meetings. And it was right when they were talking about updating the drilling ordinance. And, you know, suddenly the city council was like the hopping place to be. Not even the city council, planning commission meetings.
Crazy, right?
Were packed. And I just felt like, whoa, like, do people know what is happening here? This is fascinating. And I just, I don't, maybe as like a storyteller, to me, it just felt like there's, there's a plot and a drama and like characters. And I just got sort of hooked.
You know, and when we had people from national organizations coming in to address the city council and the planning commission, which most people don't even know exists.
No.
You know?
It's not super exciting.
No, it's usually not sexy. It's usually not. But until they want to build something, until somebody wants to build something in your neighborhood, and then all of a sudden it's riveting. But, uh, yeah, I mean, all of a sudden in Stillwater, you know, we always talk about this in the newsroom, how Stillwater is such kind of a weird town. Because in a way, we're this sleepy little kind of nicey-nice Oklahoma town. Out in the middle of the prairie, we're kind of close to everything, but not super close, you know? We're, and, you know, we're just a lot of, a lot of things. But somehow, since I've been reporting, I, I am amazed at how many times Stillwater, Oklahoma, Stillwater, America, has made the national news or international news. It is truly bizarre to me. It blows all of our minds.
No, I mean, I, somebody came out from The New Yorker to write about Stillwater. I met her. I was like, hey, I've read your novel. What's up, Rivka Galchen?
Oh, my gosh.
Thanks for coming to Stillwater.
Yeah, that is crazy.
I think it just shows the uniqueness of a college town with that transient environment, which is a blessing and a curse, right? You know, it can bring some amazing people. And then sometimes they don't get to stay.
Right. And then you add in a few natural disasters and a pandemic. And you've, you've got some pretty gripping stuff. I mean, you've got interesting times.
For sure.
We do always have interesting times here.
It feels like we do. It's, it's kind of odd. Okay, so that is kind of.
Yeah. So I just, I got very interested. And then, um, as all of that was happening, Mayor Bartley was ending his term and Gina Noble was running. And so they were gonna fill her seat. And I just sort of was like, maybe I'll apply for it.
I remember that.
Yeah, so I did. And I was absolutely not ready in any way to be on the city council at that point. But I'd, I guess, said some things at the council meeting that were like Pat Darlington and Gina Noble both sort of came up to me afterwards and were like, hey, if you're interested in doing, like, here's some things you can do. And Gina emailed me later and was like, there's an opening seat on the planning commission. I think you should apply for it. So I did.
There you go. So what did you think about planning commission? What was that like serving on planning commission?
It was so interesting. It was, I felt, I mean, I felt I felt like everybody was looking at me like, why do you want to do this? You know, it was like Mike Booker, who's the head of long-term planning at OSU. And Dusty Wayne, who'd been on planning commission for like 20 years. And he's a builder, like, all these people who are sort of obvious.
Right.
Members of the planning commission and then like an English professor. So I tried to learn a lot. I remember the first meeting I was in, uh, they were talking about rezoning a particular area to industrial and, or from industrial to commercial, I think. I don't know. I remember.
Right.
But I remember, like, it was just rezoning. And I said something like, well, can we ask what they're planning to build there? Like, I thought that would influence my decision. What are they planning to do? And Mike Booker turned to me and he's like, that is not a question that we can ask. We have to assume that they will develop it in the most, you know, intense use within that allowed zoning.
Okay.
And I was like, okay. Like, I didn't know that. There's, there's no class where you, they teach you how to be on planning commission before you're on planning commission. They just throw you in. Read the city code.
You think there could be just a, you know, a short, two-page document with, uh, some suggestions?
Bad book right there. The city code.
Oh, the city code. Just read the city code.
That's not instructive.
No, I mean, I met with Paula Dennison before and she sort of gave me a little rundown, but.
You know, I mean, with planning commission, it, it has a huge impact on people's lives.
It really does.
And people don't always realize that. It's a really big responsibility. But I've seen over the years, so many developers come in, or not developers, even property owners. And they say, well, you know, we want to rezone this to commercial, commercial, general, light, industrial, whatever it might be. And then in the city council, they can ask what you're planning on building. And they, you know, they're, sometimes they say, oh, we don't really know, but we felt like the property might be more marketable under that. Or, you know, well, they, you know, we have a buyer who says they want to build a storage facility or something. You know, usually something on the lower end of, of the spectrum, right? But that speculative rezoning is, it's a real trap because if you rezone something.
Once it's been rezoned, it can be anything within that zoning designation.
Mike's not wrong. They could come in and build the biggest, baddest, most intensive thing allowed under the code.
And then that's why it's kind of that two-step process where planning commission, planning commission is that first step.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, so planning commission, you, you did that.
I did that. And then while I was on the planning commission, the planning commission always has a representative on the board of adjustments.
Right.
And so that kind of came open. I'm pretty sure Mike Booker threw me under the bus there. He was like, I nominate Ariel Ross. He was like, we usually nominate the newest person on the planning commission because we've all done it. So I did that for a year while I was also doing planning commission.
Before.
Oh, no. No.
Now, in the.
One of those unsaid traditions.
Yeah.
Now, and this is people asking for variances, right?
Yeah. So Board of Adjustments is, as they introduced it to me, a quasi judicial board where people aren't asking for a zoning change. They're saying, can I get like an exception from this particular zoning requirement for this reason? And you have to show need, like you have to show why it's causing a hardship for you to follow that requirement within your zoning or something like that.
Okay.
Uh, so that was a lot of, it, I mean, it wasn't a lot. They don't actually meet that often.
There's not that many requests.
No, but it was always something totally different and it involved much more interpretation um, of, does this qualify as a hardship or can we show why we should vote one way or the other? But, and it sort of sets precedent.
I can see that. Once you let somebody build something into the easement or the right of way, you've established that, right?
Yeah. Like, the first Board of Adjustments meeting I was at, um, they were in the process of building one of the new fraternities up on university. And they realized that this dome that was in their plans was gonna go above the height limit in that zoning area. They wanted to request a variance to go above it and it was a very complicated conversation. We ended up granting it and the, the reasoning was basically like that this area, we set more of a value on aesthetics in terms of the buildings. And that the architects were arguing like this would impact the aesthetic plan of this building and.
Okay. Now, was the dome going to make it taller than the, uh, Edmund Lowe Library?
No. No, no.
Because that's actually the standard.
But it is the one. It's right across from Edmund Lowe, so.
That is actually one of the standards in that area. I remember being in the city council meeting where that was discussed. They don't want anything taller than the, uh, tower on the Edmund Lowe Library.
Yeah.
I mean, that makes sense. Uh, I know you can see that tower all the way from about Fifty-Sixth Street in South Washington. Probably one of the best views of Stillwater and on a clear day.
Oh.
I mean, you could almost see library lawn.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it is, it is very beautiful.
I can, I can be all right with that library being kind of the
Yeah.
The tall center thing.
Okay, so you've, you've been through some of the nuts and bolts parts of running the city.
Yeah.
You, you've made yourself familiar with that and you work, you work on the Block Thirty-Four Task Force, right? Um, so I guess the big question that I wanna ask and maybe the hardest one, I don't know, is, I mean, given everything you've seen over the last year, I mean, as, as I alluded to earlier, public life is never easy, right? Serving on as an elected official is not that easy. You're kind of, you're kind of advertising that you've got the big shoulders and inviting people to pile things on them and to hold you accountable. And over the last year, it's been even more difficult because things have been so contentious. So, why do you wanna do it? Why do you still wanna do it?
I mean, I don't know that this is the obvious answer. I think it's so interesting. It, it makes me excited. Um, I think I'm sort of a problem solver or like a puzzle. I have kind of a puzzling mind, I guess. Like, I like looking at, here is the situation given. Here's what we're trying to achieve. Like, how do we make that happen? Just it satisfies me.
And then how do you, how do you turn that into, um, actually representing people?
People? I think part of the parameters are the people, right? That it's a community with a lot of needs, uh, with a lot of challenges, with a lot of divisions. I I feel like I'm a, I'm a good person to talk to. I don't really, I don't think I make enemies. I mean, maybe I have some enemies out there, but, um, I like talking to people and seeing if I can find a middle ground. I do that a lot in the classroom.
I imagine, uh, compromise is, is something we need to constantly relearn.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely. And, I mean, serving on the city council too is so much more than people realize. First of all, I think sometimes people think they get paid quite a bit and they don't.
No.
It's like fifty bucks a meeting and those are the regularly scheduled meetings. Those aren't even like the special.
And I think you get a box lunch.
Uh, if you're lucky, if you're lucky, you might get a sandwich or some kind of a box dinner.
Sometimes get sandwiches before planning commission.
What kind of sandwiches? Where do those sandwiches come from?
Uh, sometimes Jimmy John's, sometimes there's pizza.
Right.
We did not get paid for planning commission, but sometimes there is dinner.
There you go.
Sometimes you got a pizza party.
Exactly. So, okay, so you've got that. And then most of the city councillors I've spoken to over the years have indicated that they spend about ten to fifteen hours a week preparing between checking emails, reading reports, you know, and then you've got the public appearances that you're kind of expected to do or that you wanna do if you wanna get out and have the community get to know you. So it's, it's not an easy job. I commend anyone who is willing to take that on and take it seriously for sure. Well, um, do you have anything else you want people to know about you, Ariel? What would you want people to understand?
I mean, I just want, I want people to be involved. It's changed the way I feel about Stillwater to, to be more involved in what is happening in Stillwater. It's made, I mean, it, we moved here, we didn't know anybody. I didn't wanna be here. Now I feel like it's home. And that is what made me feel at home here is trying to make it my home, right? Trying to kind of make myself a part of the life here. So I would like more people to have that experience, to come to a city, city council meeting, to make a public comment, to, um, volunteer for the Bicycle Pedestrian Task Force. Um, oh, it's an ad hoc committee, sorry. Volunteer for something. That's not really about me. That's more about other people.
Well, I, I, I think there is some of that where some of, uh, leadership's job is to recruit volunteers and to expand the table.
Yeah.
That people can come to.
Absolutely. Outreach and, uh, citizen engagement is, is a huge mission of, of the city government. They've been working on that for so long.
Yeah.
I mean, and, and it is so important because people come out when they're really upset about something. But then a lot of times, you know, they're, they're not really that involved. And then things sneak up on them. And then they get really upset again. So, I mean, I think the goal is to keep people more consistently involved so that they know what's coming and, and they can have a say. Because honestly, by the time the city, city council's voting on it, a lot of times it's been in the works for a long time. It's, it's too late.
And then to the public, it suddenly seems like it came out of nowhere.
Exactly.
Yeah.
You know, but, I mean, with me covering city government for so many years, I, I've seen things that, you know, they've talked about for almost a decade.
Yeah.
You know, before something finally happens with it, so.
I'm sure you know the history of the Block Thirty-Four conversation.
Oh, I think I've been in the room for most of them, actually. But, yeah. It's been a long, it's been an odyssey.
Hmm.
Yeah. So we'll see what our epic journey of Block Thirty-Four finally turns into. We may have to bring you back in to talk about Block Thirty-Four. We know that's one we're gonna try to hit at some point.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna try to continue on some conversations after this and
Right.
Well, we'll see. We'll maybe get some feedback from listeners and kind of see what they're interested in, what they want to hear. But I really, really appreciate you kind of, uh, uh, cracking this egg open here. This is our
My pleasure.
First recording.
Yeah.
And, uh, you're fantastic. Thank you so much.
You guys are both fantastic as well.
We really appreciate your, your time and your being willing to do this thing with us.
It's really fun.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we have a few reminders for people. There is a city council general election and a Board of Education primary election coming up on February ninth. The deadline to request an absentee ballot for that election is February second. You can request that through the Payne County Election Board. Early voting will be held at the Payne County Election Board at three fifteen West Sixth Avenue on the second floor on February fourth and fifth. So go out and vote.
You made it to the end of our first episode. Thanks for sticking around. We are excited that you're joining us on this adventure into podcast land. Up next, we've got an interview with Marshall Baker, Stillwater Board of Education candidate for Award Five. Before we part, I'd like to ask a favor. If you liked the show, tell your friends about it. Studio Stillwater is on every popular podcasting platform and YouTube. If there's a platform where we're not yet published and you think we should be, let us know. Like we said at the beginning of the show, we want to hear from you. Yes, really, you. We've got a couple of different ways you can connect with us. If you're an emailer, studiosstillwaterok@gmail.com. Or for the social lights, slide into our DMs on Facebook, Twitter, or Instagram. You can also send us a voice message by going to anchor.fm/studiosstillwater. Just hit the add message button to record right from your phone or computer. Note that this will require you to create a free Anchor account. Part of the vision of Studio Stillwater is to include more local voices. We would love to feature your voice in a future episode. Finally, check out the show notes. There you will find links to everything we discussed on the show. Thanks again for joining us and have a great day.